Yes, you have six.
Okay, so this is the South River Board of Education regular meeting of Thursday, January 28th, 2021. We will open as we always do with our flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would just like to ask everybody if they would please observe a moment of silence. Memory of Superintendent Zercher's father, Joseph Lament. Thank you. May he rest in peace, Sylvia. Okay, statement of adequate notice. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Laws of 1975 of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On January 7th, 2021, the notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. On January 7th, 2021, the notice was faxed mailed to the following newspapers: Home News Tribune, Pentecost. On January 7th, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Due to the state of emergency declared by the State of New Jersey and the United States Government regarding COVID-19, this meeting is being held by way of video conference in order for the Board of Education to conduct business. This meeting is being conducted virtually, and a link to the meeting invitation has been posted to the district website so that the public may join and provide comment. Upon joining the meeting, all participants will have their audio muted. If anyone from the public would like to be recognized during open comment portions of the meeting, they may do so by using the chat reader. Here, members of the public must send their name and address to the meeting host, Brian Dougherty. You will be recognized to speak by the host at the appropriate time when your audio will be enabled. Participants for open comment will be called in the order that they were received.
I have to turn my video on?
Recorded, and a link to the meeting will be made available on the district website upon completion. At this time, our attorney has a general statement regarding this meeting because we cannot take the roll until all the members are in. Mr. Parton?
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, Mr. Dougherty, the Director of Technology, is trying to get all the board members in. There is obviously a lot of interest in tonight's meeting, so he is shuffling some people around to try to make board members login possible. If anyone gets bounced out, just try to log back in right away, but we are doing what we can to get everybody in who has to be here as part of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Parton, and I'm going to ask if everyone can mute themselves at this time. And Mr. Dougherty, when you have all the board members in, could you let us know? Thank you.
All right, I'm having a hard time still finding, it looks like two of the board members, Mr. Bazak and Mr. Rashatar. And here's, I found Mrs. Bush, she should be coming in now. I still don't, I don't know that if Mr. Bazak or Rashatar are here, so. All right, Renee Bush is in.
I'm going to send them a message to try to log back in.
Yeah, I don't know if they got hung up because they were caught at the end of the waiting room, so. Can you give me just one more minute? I'm scanning through the, there's over 100 people, about 100 people in here, so.
Renee, I saw you and now I don't.
She's here somewhere. I can see her name listed, but I don't see the other two yet.
Sylvia, there's a question in the chat room. Would you like to take it?
All right, hold on, here's Ray. Okay, Mr. Bazak should be coming in now, and the last one I'm waiting on is Mr. Rashatar at this point, I believe. Mrs. Urbannick?
Okay, thank you. We're going to try to get Mr. Rashatar into the meeting. Renee, just to catch you up, and Ray, we're trying to get everybody onto the meeting. We're just about at capacity, so Brian is working his technology magic to get the board members in.
Thank you.
Has anyone been able to get in contact with Mr. Rashatar? So he's the only one I don't see so far.
Dave Liz, yes.
He's trying. He said I, yep.
I'm on the phone with him right now. Give me a minute, please.
So I just have to say I really like the new laptops, thank you, but the mouse is off-centered.
Listen.
I keep clicking it, but I'm clicking the wrong side of the mouse. It's okay. I really like them.
I'll give you an external mouse for next meeting.
No, it's good. I'm fine. I just got to get used to it, that's all.
All right, I still don't see him in here yet, but I don't want to hold you up too much longer if he's the only one missing, so.
He's getting the message that we're at max to try again later, so he's not even given the option to come on in.
Ryan, I think you're going to have to free up some spots to let him in.
Okay. I apologize in advance if I bounce anybody out, but I'm going to go with possibly people I don't recognize, so.
Or perhaps any doubles. I think I noticed some people were logged in on multiple devices.
Yeah. All right, let's see. We're still, I'm currently right now at a minute 94. We should have some space, so I don't know why he's getting that. Can he refresh that a little bit just to see? Because some people may have not come through. Dan, that's you, right? No, I mean, I should have space for him, so I don't know why he's not, or why he's getting that message at this point.
I had to try all the way at the very beginning, like all over again.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. He might have to close it. Oh, I see him. Hold on, he's coming in.
There he is.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. All right, have a good meeting, Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, so now that looks like all the board members are on. Mr. Kokoska, would you call the roll?
Bazak?
Here.
Mr. Budson?
Here.
Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Byrne? Mrs. Byrne, here.
Are you muted, Ms. Byrne? I did see her. Brian, is Lisa here?
Lisa, you're muted. She just put in the chat that she lost picture. I am here, is what she just put in the chat.
Okay, we'll take that as her roll call.
Okay. Mrs. Lell?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mr. Rashatar?
Here.
Ms. Sadowski?
Here.
Mrs. Urbannick?
Here.
Ms. Almeida?
Don't know if she got in. If she wasn't able to get in, we will excuse her for this evening. Okay, thank you. We do have some minutes that will need approval. This is for the August 27th, 2020, October 29th, 2020, November 23rd, 2020, and December 21st, 2020, regular meeting minutes. The first three dates that I mentioned, they are revised. It is very motion for those.
Nelson.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. I think I heard a second by Mr. Rashatar. Are there any questions, comments, or edits in approving these minutes? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is.
There are no items on the agenda for this month.
Thank you.
Cindy, can I interject for a minute? Because I'm getting a lot of like muffled sound that I can't, I don't know. Could everybody mute themselves while we're not talking so I could, we could hear? Sorry, even, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. That includes board members. Thank you. Excuse me. Okay, so next item on the agenda will be the financial report to be given by Ms. Lell.
Hi, thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is in receipt of the financial report, which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the school, of the Board's Secretary and the Treasurer of School money for November 2020 be approved and I so move.
Motion by Ms. Lell. Is there a second?
Nielsen.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Are there any questions, comments, or edits on the financial report? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Ms. Zercher, for her monthly report.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. I'd like to begin our January report by mentioning that January is School Board Member Appreciation Month, and I would just like to take this opportunity to recognize our district's school board. Our members of the board are always involved. They're engaged. They're invested in the best interest of folks. Detail-oriented, budget-conscious, everything we can ask for in a board. So a certificate of appreciation from the district will be presented to one of you, and we can't thank you enough for your service. I think Mr. Dougherty was trying to put up a picture of the certificate so you had a heads up on what it looked like. We'll wait for him to do that and move on to the next item in the meantime. I did want to talk a little bit about what's happening with the COVID-19 rate of transmission. Oh, there's a certificate. That's what it looks like, Mrs. Urbannick. We're using yours as an example, but each member of the board will receive this personalized certificate in a show of appreciation from our district. So her next item on the superintendent's report is, again, just a brief update on the rate of COVID-19 transmission. As you are aware, we are making, we've been making decisions about our reopening plan. We've had for quite some time on the calendar a plan to reopen on February 1st. It's hard to believe that's already around the corner, and it's already February of 2021. So we're following statistics closely on this. The rate of transmission is defined by the rate by which the virus is spreading. Sometimes it's referred to as the RT. An RT above one means that each infected person is spreading the virus to more than one additional person. So the lower the rate of transmission, the lower the RT, the better. Over the last week, I'm happy to report that the RT has been making continuous declines across the state. As of 1/27, as of yesterday, the rate of transmission had dropped to 0.91, which is well below that pivotal 1.0 mark that we're looking for. That means that the spread of COVID is trending downward. Of course, COVID is still a concern, still something that we are following closely with the Health Department. There are levels of risk per county. Middlesex County continues to be fluctuating between the red and the orange risk levels, but we are seeing that that transmission rate is lowering in Middlesex County, but also across the state. So that is, that is good news there. So we are returning to school February 1. We've been sending out some communications regarding this. Please make sure you're looking at our district website, our social media pages. We put out an FAQ. We'll be putting out a video, two separate videos tomorrow, one for our in-person hybrid families and one for our virtual-only families, just to give them some updates as to some, some new things that are taking place as of February 1. For example, for in-person students, we have now with additional care funding that we received last month, we have now purchased a personal desk shield for every single student at the primary school, elementary school, and middle school. And we did this because those levels, primary, elementary, middle school, are schools where we know students are younger, might need more mask breaks, are eating in school, and so they have an extra layer of protection by having individualized desk shields. Those gray levels are also in cohorts. That means the kids don't travel from one location to the other, and so therefore it makes it easy for a student to have a personalized desk shield for, again, additional protection, and our teachers will, will deem those necessary as, as they need to based on what's happening in the classroom. We also went through an upgrade in our bandwidth system yet again that occurred this afternoon, which means that we are hoping that we have less disruption for our virtual learners and all of our learners when they are at home during virtual instruction as well as streaming from, from our buildings. The survey that we put out recently to parents shows that about 51% of our families are choosing to stay remote at this time. 49% are choosing to come back in-person hybrid. This is actually lower than what we experienced in October. So in February, on February 1st, we're expecting to actually see less in-person students. We can certainly meet more capacity, and so we'll be flexible as conditions change and people want to change back from virtual to in-person. We will make those adjustments if we have the capacity to, to do so. And the other way as well, if a student begins in-person and for whatever reason that, that environment is not working for them, they can switch back to, to virtual. So as long as that is an option based on the Governor's Executive Order, the district will continue to allow that to be an option for our, our parents as well. January, February, we start to have a lot of conversations about our upcoming budget. So it is our budget season. That's already beginning, and that's for school year 2122. We'll be reviewing individual school and department budgets with, with each of our administration. We'll be taking a look at what they're prioritizing based on our student population needs, and we will present a tentative budget or budget information to our Finance Committee and, and then to the full board, and then as a public presentation to, to all. So that's coming up in the next couple of months. And our community COVID testing has gone very well. We've done two community testing days. We partnered with Capital Health and Synergy Labs to conduct this on site. Our school nurses have been trained to conduct the COVID saliva tests as well, and that has proven to be extremely helpful, and we can't thank them enough for their support in that initiative. And like I mentioned, we had two, two community testing days. They were extremely well attended. We tested over 700 people, and they were a mix of, of South River community members, our staff as well. So we're, we're very happy to continue that program, and we'll be looking to announce a new date for February coming up. So please be on the lookout for our messages and our social media pages on that. And so concludes my report for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on the superintendent's report?
Nielsen, remove the superintendent's report is read.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Byrne.
Second by Ms. Byrne. Are there any questions, comments, or edits from any of the board members with anything that our superintendent has shared with us? I would just like to comment that that is a phenomenal public service, Ms. Zercher, that you arranged for the borough of South River with that COVID testing. To test 700 people in two days is a remarkable feat, and I really appreciate you setting that up for the members of this community and also our school population and staff. Thank you. So we do have a motion. We do have a second. If there, are there any other comments?
I would like to just agree with you, Mrs. Urbannick. That is, that was a big benefit for the community. I know firsthand, when you need testing, it's very hard to find sometime, and that made things a lot easier for a lot of people.
Sure did. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to open the meeting for reception of visitors, and at this time, the public may address agenda items only. There will be a public portion at the end of the meeting to address other items of interest to the board. So if there is anything on the agenda that anyone in the public wishes to address, please state your name and address in the chat section of the virtual meeting, and please keep your comments to a 10-minute limit. I'm going to pause now for a moment in case anybody wants to type a question into the chat section.
I don't see any new questions being entered at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we will close the public portion at this end of the meeting. At this time, we do have a resolution to be read for one of our board members who worked for a long time. This resolution will be read by Ms. Lell, who served with Mr. Rosano and is also the mother of his grandson. Ms. Lell, please.
All right, I have a surprise for you. We're going to do this together.
Hi, Nick.
All right.
It's great to see you. Thanks, Liz.
You're welcome. Here we go. So while some of you may know that Tony was my father-in-law, you may not be aware that he is the reason I applied for a math opening the summer of 1997 in this district where I started my public school career. Throughout his teaching career and subsequent retirement, he has always discussed our school system with pride. He will forever be my Nicholas's grandfather and a part of our family. It is with utmost respect and my distinct honor and pleasure that I read the following resolution. Whereas Anthony Rosano served as a member of the South River Board of Education from May 2011 through December 2020, and whereas Anthony Rosano served his community effectively and diligently by discharging any and all tasks assigned to him efficiently and maintained a high degree of interest in the educational welfare of the children, and whereas Anthony Rosano was instrumental in maintaining his responsibility to the Board of Education and played prominent roles as the Vice President of the Board of Education, Chairperson of the Instruction Committee, Vice Chairperson of the Policy and Legislation Committee, Safety and Risk Management Committee, School Community Relations Committee, Negotiations Committee, and Buildings and Grounds Committee, and member of the Human Resource Committee, Negotiations Committee, Council and Board Committee, Finance Committee, and whereas the Board of Education at its public meeting of January 28, 2020, regrets the loss of this member and wishes him continued good health and success in the future, and wishes to make this resolution a matter of public record. And now, therefore, be it resolved that this resolution be adopted and spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Anthony Rosano. Signed, Board Secretary Kenneth J. Kokoska, Cynthia Urbannick, President. Thank you.
Mrs. Lell, thank you so much for reading this for me and for your heartfelt and loving comments and bringing, bringing Nick here. All right, Nick. Also, if I may indulge for one minute, Mrs. Urbannick, for those of you who don't know, this is my wife Linda and my daughter Angela, our daughter Angela, who came in to see this resolution. So thank you again, everyone. Mr. Parton, I want to thank you too for being an outstanding attorney. In the nine years that I was on the board, not once did you steer us wrong or give us bad advice, and you also explained every option and gave us every detail of those options so we can make an intelligent decision. Your help is invaluable. Mr. Kokoska, how many years have you been with us?
Twenty. Twenty.
Twenty. Twenty years, and we have an audit every year, so the public knows we have an audit every year. And for 20 years, not one penny has been in the wrong place. There hasn't been one mistake in 20 years. This is, I think, a remarkable achievement. So, Mr. Kokoska, congratulations to you and your staff for doing such an outstanding job, and I want the public to know what we have here.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty.
Oh, you're welcome. And Mrs. Urbannick, thank you. When I wasn't going to run last time, not this past election, but the one before, you talked me into running for one more term, and I thank you for doing that because with, with Mrs. Zercher and the board together, all together, working in harmony, it was great. I'm glad that I came back. Thank you for talking me into. And to the people of South River, thank you. Oh, thank you so much for sending me to a seat on the board for three consecutive three-year term. The reason I retired from the board, I chose not to run again, actually, is because of personal health reasons. Nothing fatal, but still, several of these reasons impede my judgment. They impede my memory especially, and there are times I was making a point to the board and I lost my train of thought in the middle of a sentence. That happens to everybody, but it happened to me a lot. So I felt that it was time for me, since I wasn't as effective, to step aside, and I see I have been replaced by quality people. So thank you, everyone. Fellow board members, thank you, and I wish you all the very, very best. Take care.
Take care, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Tony. Hey, we have.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. We do have a motion on the floor for this resolution by Ms. Lell.
Second.
Is there someone who'd like?
Second.
Second by Ms. [inaudible]. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other board members that wish to comment on this time, at this time for Mr. Rosano?
Yeah, I would. Tony, you first came into my life as a teacher back in the 70s down at the June High School. We worked together when you were a councilman and I was PBA president on contracts. You always conducted yourself and treated me with the utmost respect, even as a board member, and as we sat across from each other, you always had the utmost respect for any decision. We were able to talk it out like men, and it's been a pleasure serving with you. It was a pleasure having you as a teacher, and it's a pleasure having you as a friend. And it's a pleasure having you as a friend. And I wish you the best in your future.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I, I appreciate that more than I can say.
Take care, sir.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to go into the committee reports. We will have the consent resolution after the Safety and Risk Management Committee report. So starting off our committee reports with athletics and extracurricula, Mr. Budzen.
Well, there's nothing on the agenda, but the winter sports have started. The boys won their first game and the girls lost. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Under Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Nielsen.
I keep forgetting how to unmute. Thank you, Mr. Back. As you can see from Mr. Blaz's report, you know, he keeps up with the day-to-day maintenance of the buildings. So popular what you hear on radio, these buildings aren't squeaky clean and don't need, you know, janitors and the whatnot inside our buildings. Our staff is there. We do have students and staff inside. So they do, they, and they're not just there to do that. They're helping out with the delivery of meals. And they've also helped out with the, the testing for the COVID. So again, Mr. Blaz and the staff, thanks for all they do. And that's all I have for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nielsen. Under Finance, Ms. Lell.
Thank you so much. I'd like to start, since this is the start of the year and it's our first meeting, that to introduce the Finance Committee, I have Ms. Bush as member. I have Mr. Basak as Vice Chair, and I'm the Chair. We did not hold a meeting this month, but I do want to inform the general board and the public that this committee works alongside Ken and his department with matters of finance as related to the district. We review and subsequently approve standard items, financial report, tax requisitions, line item transfers, and the requisition list. In addition, items related to grants, state aid, various district contracts, the annual report, the annual audit, and the budget fall within this committee. Having said that, we have six items on tonight's agenda. Eight point one is, thank you, Brian, for making it larger for me. Approve addressing student learning loss grant application 2020-2021 school year. Our tax requisition, line item transfers, and the requisition list were attached. Eight point five is approve addition approved the CARES Act Consolidated Amendment to Grant Application for the 2020-2022 school years. And eight point six is addition approved contract Broadway licensing, theater licensing services provider for the high school for the 2021 school year. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lell. Our next committee report is Instruction. Ms. Bush.
Yes, so I am honored to have to fill the shoes of Mr. Rosano, who's been chairing the Instruction Committee for many years. I, I hope I can live up to his expectations. I have a couple of things I'd like to go over because we did meet at the end of December and I wanted to report out on the really great things that are happening in instruction and curriculum. And just to let the public know, it's more than just a textbook revision that we're working on, which will be my resolution shortly. So in June 2020, the State Board adopted the 2020 NJ SLS standards. And basically what has to happen is by September 2021, we have 87 courses in visual performing arts, science, world language, and career readiness that need to be revised to meet these standards. And that's at the high school and at the middle school. In addition, that same set of standards includes another grouping that have to be revised by September 2022. That's comprehensive education and phys ed, social studies, computer science. And in that area, we're gonna have 57 courses that are going to need to be revised. So Dr. Travassano and his staff are going to be very, very busy revising and making sure that our coursework is up to standard. A couple other things that I think the public ought to know, that we have some new courses that are being added to the high school for this coming school year. This includes American Sign Language, Digital Citizenship, and Forklift Repair. The Forklift Repair course is only going to be dealing with the instructional component, not the hands-on component. We have explored and still are exploring additional programs at the high school and the middle school for future implementation. We're considering a peer leadership program as well as other courses for social emotional well-being. These programs may not be implemented next year, and we're still doing some research. So we will let the public know as soon as we know. English as a Second Language Program at the middle and the high schools also being revised. For our high achieving ESL students, we're going to create a hybrid ESL, English Language Arts course. This will allow them to continue to explore language and quick acquisition as well as be immersed in English literature and writing rather than a traditional ESL language course. And just so that everybody's aware, high school scheduling will be taking place shortly, although it will look very different than what students are used to because we are in remote instruction. So the only resolution I have to read for this evening though is about our nine point one. The textbook adoption we are going to be doing for the high school science AP Biology class, grade 12. And, Mr. Urbannick, that is everything.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Vice President. That's a very comprehensive report. It's good to know that you took that much time to let everybody out there in the public know what is going on in the schools and what we are revising. You do a lot up here, everybody does. And all the committee chairs can use as much time as they want to report out on their individual committees. It doesn't just have to be a quick snippet at these meetings. Lot of good work is done up here at this school educating the students, and I think the people like to hear about it. Thank you both to you and Ms. Lell and all of our committee chairs. They do a great job reporting on the activity that takes place to keep this school system running. Our next committee report would be negotiations, to the best of my knowledge. We do not have anything under this item. Mr. Parton, if you could help with an update, if you have any?
We are commencing the negotiations process with the administrative unit. We're working on base data and board proposals for committee review. We'll be launching that process in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Under Policy and Legislation Committee, Mr. Rashatar.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. I would just like to say that I'm happy that I'm continuing something that I've had for the last couple of months, chairing the Policy and Legislation Committee, looking forward to working with Ms. Bush and Mr. Budzen on that. And also looking forward to, when the time comes, to getting involved with the review of all the policies that were listed as one of our board goals for this coming year, for this school year. There are two items. Eleven point one is second reading to adopt revised policy on standards of proficiency. I hope everyone had a chance to review those. And second reading, eleven point two, second reading to adopt revised policy on the COVID-19 travel policy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Under Human Resources, Mr. Basak.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. For tonight, we have five items on the agenda. Item 12.1, approved resignation for retirement, Janice Kaminsky-Cortez, primary school teacher. Item 12.2, approved disability sick family leave, Cassandra Jubba, elementary school special education teacher, 2020-2021 school year. Item 12.3, approved intermittent family leave, Tania Soto, primary school teacher, 2020-2021 school year. Item 12.4, approve appointment mentor, 2020-2021 school year. And item 12.5, approved salary adjustment, Deborah Pfeifer, 2020-21 school year. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Basak. For Safety and Risk Management, Ms. Sedalsky.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. There are two items on the agenda tonight. Thirteen point one is to approve the annual review of the memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials. And thirteen point two is to approve route number 1400 to New View Academy, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for the 2020-2021 school year. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to remind all board members, if they have a question on any of these items under any of these committees at any time, that can always be asked either during the committee report, after it, or when the time is appropriate. So now at this point, we will go back to the consent resolution, and I will ask Mr. Kokuska to please read the consent resolution.
The South River Board of Education by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions of a routine in non-controversial nature at one time. Whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the said Board of Education in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Under Finance, items eight point one, eight point six. Construction, nine point one. Policy and legislation, items 11.1, 11.2. Human resources, 12.1 through 12.5. Safety and risk, 13.1 and 13.2.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for that?
Nielsen.
By Mr. Nielsen and a second by, was that Ms. Bush?
Bush, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, edits, or abstentions on any of these items? Hearing none. Mr. Kokuska, would you please call the roll?
To Basak?
Yes.
Mr. Budzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Bern?
Yes.
Mrs. Lell?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rashatar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbannick?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. We're going to now move on to our School Community Relations Committee and have some reports by Ms. Bern.
Okay, um, so I realize I'm the chairperson. I'm not quite sure where I'm at with this and how this goes. Sorry, this is my first time. What do I do?
Okay, so just as a little guidance, do you have backup for these items? You can just announce them. And I'm going to actually ask Mr. Rashatar to step in and help you since he is your Vice Chair. Mr. Rashatar?
Sure, absolutely. Be glad to. Ms. Bern, generally what we do is we just read the attachments, which I'll do. It's a press release. Consider the Wall of Fame. Because our full school district will once again be seeking nominations for individuals for selection to the South River High School Wall of Fame. As an institution of learning, the school has educated people who have achieved a superlative status within various fields of endeavor. As such, the purpose of the Wall of Fame shall be to identify these individuals and to recognize their stellar achievement and performance. These individuals and the subsequent recognition of their achievement shall serve as a role model for current and future South River High School students. This award is in no way limited to athletic achievement. A wall of fame is erected in the main corridor of the high school with the names of the recipients on plaques of recognition. Nominees for the Wall of Fame will be considered based on the following criteria. Attended and subsequently graduated from South River High School. Number two, exhibits a high level of achievement in his or her field. Number three, possesses the qualities of a positive role model for South River youth. The committee will consider all nominees based on the strengths of the candidates in the above areas. A maximum of two individuals may be inducted this year. If you know of any individual who believes, who you believe meets the criteria for nomination to the Wall of Fame, please visit our website for a nomination for. Deadline for submission is April 1st, 2021. And, okay, so the second one is near and dear to my heart. And I was gonna mention it in my re-
I think we lost both Ms. Rashatar and Ms. Bern. Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Dave, start over. We lost you at near and dear. I'm sorry.
Did you, did you hear the complete press release about the Wall of Fame?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the second one is about the Staten Island, oh my goodness. South River Foundation for Educational Excellence Fundraiser, which is called Mask Up in Style. And will be, people can choose from a large variety of masks to help you stay safe, be stylish, and help our students of the South River Public Schools. Fifteen percent of all proceeds will be donated to SURFEE to help fund our teacher grants for their students and graduating senior scholarships for the class of 2021. To view selection pricing, go to the SRFE Facebook page or to srf-e.org website. Place an order or questions, send an email to info@srfe.org. SRFE extends our thanks to Vanessa Suarez for her support by supplying the items from her business for this fundraiser. Okay. South River Press, our postal's press release on Friday, January 8th, Jason Almeida, Anthony Guido Jr., Afri Rivera, Brody Osimoz, and Jason Tencio, members of South Rivers R U B Y junior class team, participated in the business plan competition against teams from Sabre War Memorial, North Brunswick High School, Jackson Liberty High, and Jackson Memorial High. Our team presented a business plan for their product, Navascreen. Navascreen is a see-through screen embedded in an airplane's windshield. It visualizes weather conditions, therefore helping pilots navigate through bad weather, resulting in safer skies and a better customer flying experience. The team placed second out of the nine in that competition. And the R U B Y program is an acronym for Rutgers University Business for Youth. It's an after-school business program that provides high school students with an experiment, experiential learning opportunity, supplementing what they are learning in their high school business classes and helping them prepare for college. Each school is assigned a mentor who's a current Rutgers University Business School student to mentor the students and guide them through the program. The students meet once or twice a month with Mrs. Bussell and their college mentor. In addition to the business plan competition, during the visual virtual conference last week, students had an opportunity to speak with a panel of entrepreneurs and executives. Next month, the students will learn how to analyze a business case study with an executive from Johnson Johnson. Students who are enrolled in the program agree to participate for three years. They begin the program to their sophomore year. We currently have two cohorts, a group of juniors and a group of sophomores. And that's, let's see, January student of the month. For January, high school's proud to honor Jessica Saywich, Saywich, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce that properly. And this award, by the way, is, is, is based on their exemplary status as a model student through community service academic record, modeling for the strife of five core ethical values, respect, responsibility, honesty, kindness, and service, maintaining exemplary, exemplary behavioral attendance record. So it's Jessica, and Jessica's committed to her church and her heritage. Within her church community, Jessica serves as an altar server and trains younger altar service. She's also active in the National Polish Heritage Society, where she teaches her heritage to a younger, to younger generations and leads the South River Memorial Day Parade as a, here we go. Krakow Yannik, Krakow Yannik. I apologize for that. Jessica may be found participating in many different activities at South River High School. Her commitment to scholastics is evidenced by her membership in the German National Honor Society and the Math and Science Honor Society, as well as being an active member in the German Club and Science League. Jessica displays her commitment to being a well-rounded individual by volunteering athletics and theater. She's a boys volleyball manager and a member of the girls varsity volleyball, volleyball team, where she was named Most Valuable Player. She's also actively involved in it as a member of the high school drama stage crew. Jessica plans to pursue her career as a forensic pathologist in the criminal justice field. Congratulations, Jessica. Okay, and one more.
Mr. Rashatar?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bern has indicated that she's getting the hang of it. Ms. Byrne has indicated that she's getting the hang of it, and she would like to know if you could let her read the middle school.
More than welcome.
Give your voice a rest. I'm so sorry. I feel so silly.
Oh, no, 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 no. Dave's a great help. He is. And, great, go right ahead.
So this is South River Public Schools' press release for the Middle School December Students of the Month. Grade six E L A for Vanessa Chifardi, and I'm going to apologize because I'm going to kill people's names. Math, Ian Acaveto. Science, Angelina Ribario. Social Studies, Tatiana Branson. P E, Brianna Seprio, and Psycho Lamise Awad, grade seven for E L A. Sorry, the cat just jumped on my screen. Coltruski. Math, Alex Cruz Escavel. Science, Evelyn Jimenez. Social Studies, Luis Zavala. P E, Brendan Sikorski, and Psycho Anastasia Markov. And for grade eight, E L A is Brandon Syla. Math, Diana Hernandez. Science, Joshua Olivera. Social Studies, Victoria Costa. E S L, Macon de Silva Souza. P E, Lucas Paz, and Psycho Rachel Borsek. That is everybody. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much. And I see in our chat section, we have some individual cheering going on for some recognition. So that's, that's good to see that participation. All right. Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Mr. Nielsen, anything on the School Board Borough Council Liaison Committee?
No, I attempted to sign on to their meeting on Monday night, but I guess my section of town was having trouble with Wi-Fi, and it wouldn't let me stay in. So I'll try to reach out again and see if I can get in contact with her and hopefully have something for next month, Madam President.
Great, thank you very much. If anybody has any items for Mr. Nielsen to be discussed as joint items between the Borough and the Board of Education? Thank you. Our PTA liaison, Ms. Sedowski.
Thank you. I have a couple updates. The primary school PTA is looking for volunteers to record themselves reading a story to be shared during the Read Across the Primary School event in March. Anybody that's interested in making a video should email the srprimarypta@gmail.com. Staff, parents, and other community members, and even older siblings are welcome to read. And the primary school is also taking Valentine Candy Graham orders, and the purchasing information can be found in the eRAMP. And the next meeting for the primary school PTA is on February seventeenth. For the elementary school, the elementary school PTA is asking to please continue to share pictures on the counselor's Google classroom so they can work on getting your book together. More information on that can be found in the January Elementary School newsletter, and the next meeting is actually on February fourth. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our South River Public Library Liaison, Mr. Budzen?
Well, the library is open. You can come in and browse for books. You can make an appointment to use their computer, or you can call up and they'll deliver the books to your car on the outside. And they are continuing to have their story times on Thursday, Wednesday, and Friday. And they're looking, they're buying a tent for the summertime so they can have some activities outside. And that's all I have.
Oh, that's, that's very good news and information. For our South River Foundation for Educational Excellence Liaison, we'll go into Mr. Rashatar.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. Shinata had texted me earlier today to make sure there are a couple things that I meant that I should mention. We met last week. We have two new members. Very important announcement is that, a reminder, is that we do have funds for teachers mini grants, and that's, and there's, money is still available. Completed applications are due next month in February. She wanted me to talk about ongoing pledges are still open for past supporters and honorees. And also, the last item, which is something I read as a press release, the mask up in style, which is probably our, you know, it's our current, really our current only fundraiser, stylish masks, the all different colors, boys, girls, and adults. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rashatar. We do not have representation from our student board this evening. Moving on to our attorney's report. Mr. Parton, anything for the board?
Madam President, I'm going to interrupt, but I thought I saw it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not here.
Oh, okay. I did not hear. Thank you so much for that. I don't have the full screen here. I apologize. And please, Ms. Almeida?
Thank you. I don't really have anything specific to report, but I think speaking for all students, I can say that hopefully this new year brings good health and eventually a return to some kind of normalcy once it's safe to do so. That's all.
Very well said. I think you speak for us all. Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Okay, Mr. Parton, anything from our attorney?
No, I have no updates for this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, we are moving on to the payment of bills. Ms. Lell?
Okay, I have to get my statement out. There we go. Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented having been certified by the school business administrator, board secretary be paid as listed, and I so move. The bill list was attached.
Hey, we have a motion by Ms. Lell. Is there
Nielsen.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any questions, comments, or edits? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we are going to open up the meeting to the public for the reception of visitors. The public may address any concern or comment that they have for the board. Please state your name and address in the chat section of the virtual meeting, and please keep your comments to a ten-minute limit. There is a question in there already that I think made it in after the first public portion. Ms. Zercher, can you take that? It has according to the map, we are actually at the high end of the red zone?
Sure, I can address that. I think that the map the individual is referring to is the, the regional map that's provided by the Health Department. And we are in the central east region on that map as Middlesex County. And I mentioned that we've been fluctuating between orange and red. And it has been in, in red, Middlesex County and Bergen County have had significant high numbers. So the way that you get to red on that map is that per one hundred thousand individuals, there are a hundred individuals who have tested positive for COVID. So a hundred or more out of a hundred thousand people. And so when it comes to looking at what that number means for us in South River, then we take that and narrow that view and say, well, how does South River contribute to that one hundred out of one hundred thousand? And for that, we turn to our local numbers, which are provided to us through the Health Department to SRPD. And when we look at those numbers in terms of what South River is contributing to that one hundred of a hundred thousand, the number actually is, is can be used.
I don't know if there's any follow-up to that. I can't see. I'm sorry. Cindy, you're muted. There are people typing in their names and addresses. I don't know if they want to be unmuted and speak, or if they're going to type something in the chat section. Can, can you give us some indication? Or if, Mr. Doherty, could you help us out?
Yeah, I'm just looking right now. The first one that was, came in was just Jason Bentley from the S R E A. There's no specific question, but if you'd like me to, I can allow him to talk now.
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to address the board. The South River Education Association is asking the Board of Education to delay the intended February first return to hybrid instruction until March first. The local, state, and national COVID nineteen data indicates that it is not safe to return to in-person instruction at this time. While the post-holiday spike COVID nineteen cases seems to have peaked, the numbers are still very high, especially in, especially in our, our local area. The data provided by the South River Police Department indicates at this point that there will be more positive cases in town for January than November and December. The numbers are not dropping. Last week, even with the majority of the children participating in full remote learning, in-person classrooms had to be quarantined because of positive cases in our schools. Even limiting the number of people in the building isn't working. Bringing students and teachers back into the buildings right now will only exacerbate the problem, leading to more classroom quarantines and building closures. The arrival of the UK variant in New Jersey and the likelihood of the South African and Brazilian variants appearing very soon, all of which are much more contagious, is alarming. These variants spread much more quickly. The Brazilian variant in particular, because of its sudden surge in transmission, causing it to become the dominant variant in portions of Brazil in less than a month. The science shows that these variants will become the dominant variants very soon. As at this point, the White House Coronavirus Task Force currently indicates that Middlesex County is in the red zone, with more than a hundred new cases per hundred thousand residents, and a diagnostic test positivity rate of above ten percent. Based on this information, it would be prudent to delay the return to our hybrid model. Furthermore, as you're well aware, teachers have not been able to receive the vaccine, and the governor has not given a date as to when it will be available to us. The delay will allow the vaccine rollout to continue with the hopes it will become more, become available to teachers soon. The delay will also allow the district to closely monitor the COVID nineteen trends in our district county and state. With the numbers where they are now, it is not safe to return to in-person instruction. The health and safety of our students, staff, and community continues to be a top priority. We need to remain cautious for a bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Is there a of reply to that? I would look to Ms. Zercher if she wanted to comment, or we can just move along in the comments.
Um, you know, what I can briefly say, and, and, you know, I certainly, there, there is a lot of data that can be presented back and forth, and we certainly don't want to use our time that way. What I can say is that I have used, again, our local and district specific data to make these decisions. Mr. Bentley is right in saying that we've had to quarantine. Those quarantines have all been due to exposures outside of our schools. At this time, we have zero transmissions within our schools. We've had seventeen staff members who have tested positive for COVID since September, but none of those cases can be traced back to a transmission in our school. And forty students who have tested positive and, and same, they have, those positives have been due to exposures that have not occurred due to transmissions happening in, in our schools. We do consider the precautions that we're taking to minimize our risk within our schools. Of course, we can't guarantee, but we, we feel, we feel fortunate to be in the position that we are, and, and we feel that those precautions have, have helped us stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Zercher. Mr. Doherty, would you please unmute Diane Nielsen?
Yeah, I can't find her at the time, but Diane, if you can unmute yourself, you can speak now.
Okay, let me do it. Thank you, Brian. Yes, my name is Diane Nielsen. I'm an elementary school teacher and a proud member of S R E A. This is a great forum that you guys have, and a lot of information is shared. And it is great to see the efforts of our administrators and the other things that go on. We also want to bring some light maybe to the teachers who are in the classrooms forefront with everything going on. We feel, I feel as being part of the union, and prior I was part of the union with Dow Jones, is our relationship should be a good relationship, one where we're able to talk and we help each other. And sometimes, we understand we might not know the reasons for all the decisions, but we as teachers would like to be heard sometimes, and are what is happening in the classrooms considered. There's a lot of safety issues with our students, or not safety, but the well-being of our students, them sitting at a computer for so long, their eyes look staring at a computer screen. We just want to be heard by the board too, when we're not sure if our message always gets to your level. So that's why maybe you're seeing us all here today in red. It's because we'd like to be, we're with the students, and we feel that our input is important of what we're seeing, and how, when we did go to hybrid, how those office hours helped our students so much, and how that is important. Okay, so yes, there's a lot to take into consideration, and we appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting in, but we care about our students. We have always been here. We have always wanted to teach them, and we will want to continue to teach them, but in the best situation for them and for us. So I'd like to shout out to all my fellow teachers who I know are working tired, tirelessly, and so many extra hours. Okay, and please, if the board ever has questions, ask us. We'd be happy to discuss things. Nothing came out to the students, I'm, I'm sorry, to the teachers on what did we see? What do we feel? What kind of ideas did we have? How were things working? Okay, isn't it important that they're getting the education, the best education? And part of that best education, I feel, and I think if you ask other teachers, is, would be to keep that hybrid and keep it where we can have office hours where we can get to our students. Again, I appreciate you letting me speak. I appreciate all the work everyone does. Also, out to our community for, unfortunately, we had a young student pass away recently, Edgar Harris. So thoughts and prayers to his family. And thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Know that your words do not go unheard. The board here is very attentive, and we try to do our best by getting your message, and I'm sure our superintendent hears your message too. Ms. Zercher, is there anything that you would have?
No, I mean, I want to just really reiterate what Ms. Nielsen has said about the work that our teachers are, are putting in. We certainly recognize that and see that. And then I do want to encourage our teachers to go ahead and communicate their thoughts with all the forums that, that we've put in place for them to do so. For example, their teacher leaders who meet with Dr. Trevissano on a regular basis, the Q and As that I have held for each of the buildings. We are available at any time to receive any correspondence from, from our teachers as well. And, and please do know that when our teachers communicate, I do update the board. I send them a weekly update, and a lot of that includes the perspective that we've been receiving from our teachers and, and parents. So your message does get transferred to our board members, and we try to give as many forums. We meet with the association leadership weekly. So we do try to put forums out there for the teachers to give us their feedback. But certainly, if our teachers have any other ideas for other ways to do that, we can, we can certainly be open to that also.
Thank you. And if I could add to that, yes, you've had those luncheons, and they've been helpful, and you've put out those synchronous days, and then you took them away from us, unfortunately. and you've put out those synchronous days, and then you took them away from us, unfortunately. That speaks volumes, and it is hard sometimes to speak out because people are afraid of retribution. And that's, that's sad at times. But thank you again.
Thank you. Is Lara Gatz still wishing to speak?
Hi. I unmuted myself, Brian. That's okay?
Yes, it's fine. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Mrs. Zercher, and attendees. First and foremost, I need to congratulate Tony Rosano. For those of you that do not know, close to 30 years ago, I stepped foot in South River Middle School, and the first person to greet me was Tony Rosano. At that time, there were no mentors. There were no paid mentors. And Tony Rosano became my mentor. He has walked me through every step of the way, and I wouldn't be the teacher I am without him. So I do, there you go, Tony. I do want to congratulate you and wish you the very best, and I, I, you know, I only wish you the very best. So heart to you. I love you. Thank you for all that you've done for me personally and for South River.
Thank you so much, Lara. I can't tell you how much that means to me. Thank you. I'll talk to you soon.
Okay, so that's on a personal note. Now, I'm, I'm going to read a little quick statement, and I hope it's well received. My name is Lara Gatz. I have been a middle school teacher in South River School District for 28 years. I stand before you to voice the concerns of teachers of South River regarding the district's reopening plan. As, as a result of us returning to in-person sessions for four full days a week, office hours have now been eliminated on those four days. This time was so important to the students of South River. It is a time used for teaching in small groups, one-on-one instruction, and most importantly, connecting with our students and meeting their social needs. Although everyone is doing their very best teaching virtually, it comes with many challenges. Removing this time will be devastating in meeting the needs of our diversified population. Another concern for returning to a full-day instruction is that students will be eating two meals in the classroom. Because the students will be eating, they will not be wearing their masks, which could potentially create an unsafe environment. It may increase both staff and students' exposure to the coronavirus. If you would consider returning to half-day sessions, students would be able to take their lunch and their next morning's breakfast with them, so they can eat at home where it would be much safer for everyone. I have already received my first vaccination shot. Luckily, I had little to no side effects. However, it is my understanding that the second shot may require days of rehabilitation. I know I am putting the cart before the horse. However, I am upset at the thought of having to use sick days that have to come out of my bank because the state took away the coronavirus relief for educators. The vaccine is not something I wanted, but I took it for the greater good of my students and community. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lara.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tracy Van.
Ms. Zercher, I just, I just want to clarify something for just, just one moment, just so that we're all kind of using similar concepts and a similar language. We, we did not take anything away. All that we've done is revert back to the same schedule that we implemented in October, which was our original hybrid schedule. So what we are following right now as of February 1st is the same exact schedule that we followed from October 1st all the way until we went back to, to, to full virtual. And our intent was always, for the sake of consistency, to go back to that initial schedule. So that's really all the district is doing. We're just reverting back to that. There was a mention too about the asynchronous days and those being taken away. Same thing. I just want to be on the same page with our, with our language. Those asynchronous days were provided to teachers because we heard your, your, your concern about having to adjust instruction when we went to an in-person and virtual environment that required you to plan differently than you really ever had before. And so with that, we said, well, what can we do to alleviate and provide some time for our teachers? And so we came up with this idea of the asynchronous, asynchronous days. When we reverted back away from that environment, having virtual students as well as in-person students in the same environment at the same time, we adjusted that planning time because it was no longer required. Now, having said that, that doesn't mean that I don't understand, or that we don't understand, how much planning is taking place due to the environment that we're currently in regardless. But I just wanted to be on, on the same page. This hasn't been about giving and taking away. We're just simply reverting back to our original schedule, and we're reverting back to why we put certain things in place and why those changes have, have taken place.
Can I, can I just clarify what I meant by that? Maybe, I hear what you're saying. If, if, I understood you earlier. You said the, where increased, students have increased the number of, on the survey of staying home. My, my, this is not even about me planning. This is not about me. This is about students. If you can, if you ask, and I, I think maybe even possibly send a survey out to the middle school or the elementary parents that are utilizing the office hours. I, I go on, my students have my cellphone number. They do, because that's my lifeline right now, to communicate. I get text messages from 3:00 to 5:00, "Can I help? Can I help?" And I never say no. I am on with 15 to 20 students, helping them all throughout the day. So I know what you're saying. You're going, we're reverting back to what was in place. My thing is, if we have 50% of the students staying home, now we're going to a full-day session where we haven't been for three months. They're going to be on the computer for six hours, and there are no office hours for me to meet their needs. It's really not about me. I'm, I'm so concerned with their needs and what we can do to help them be successful.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I can't speak enough to, you know, you doing things like giving your cellphone numbers and, and et cetera. I know teachers are going above and beyond. We can't take that, you know, away from the conversation at all. And while we haven't done a survey, we are able to see when students log in using their accounts. So we are able to see the number of students, the percentage of students that are actually accessing office hours, because we're able to see who logs on during those hours. So while we haven't done a survey to say, hey, are you logging onto office hours? We are able to track that data, and part of our decision-making and reverting back to the original schedule we had in place was based on that.
Okay, thank you. We have Tracy Van Dunn. Would you like to speak?
Hi. No, I didn't. I just wanted to, I just wanted to add some recent data from the New Jersey Department on Health about the daily percent positivity rate. It increased from 9.62% to over 12.62%, and according to the Department of Health, it is increasing. They believe that our lowering numbers and positivity rates is just a falsehood, that they will be increasing exponentially within the next few weeks or so. I just wanted to say that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Jamie Christie here, who is asking, "Why isn't this meeting in-person?" You are asking us to come back into the building, but the Board of Ed is still meeting virtually. Mr. Parton?
Yes, the, the reason is a pretty straightforward one. It's so that people can attend these meetings. If we had this meeting in-person, not only would the public be excluded, but some board members wouldn't even make it. The executive order from our governor on November 23rd, number 196, limits this meeting to 10 people total. It is an indoor gathering without any other exceptions. So these meetings in all districts are being held remotely to facilitate public participation and publicability to see what's going on. It's frustrating to everybody with that's the reason.
I'm sorry, but you've limited the, the Zoom meeting to 100 people. So are, are you really allowing the entire public?
That's 10 times as many.
I have colleagues who can't get on. I, you know, I have, you have employees as a Board of Education who are not here because they can't get in. So in effect, you've limited the ability for the public to attend the meeting regardless?
Yes, it is limited as little as possible, no, no different than if this were a in-person meeting. Mr. Christie and the Fire Marshal, had we been in the library at the high school, the Fire Marshal would have put a cap on it much lower than this. So we're doing the best we can, and I agree, I agree with you that there is not unlimited attendance. This is the number that we can get to.
Exactly. Sure. Exactly. That the fact that regardless of in-person or virtual, you're still limiting the number of people who are able to come to, come, come to this meeting. So, I mean.
If we had held this meeting in-person, we would have had to have limited to tops about 40 to 50 in the auditorium with people distancing. So in this capacity, we're able.
It's actually 10 people.
I, I agree with Ms. Zercher. I, I will point out that we as teachers do a hybrid where we have some students in-person, and we have some students virtually. So it seems to me that you could probably do something along those lines as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christie. We have another speaker, Dominique Russell.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I, I just, I guess I wanted to ask, what is our purpose for going hybrid? What are we hoping to gain by going back to the hybrid scenario? Because honestly, I don't feel that the hybrid model is in the best interests of all of our students. From my experience, the first time we were, we went hybrid, most of the students are virtual. And at least when we're virtual, this is as close to feeling connected that we can get, just like in this Zoom meeting. We're all facing each other. We're speaking with each other. As soon as we go to the hybrid model, I now lose that connection with more than half of my students. I have a handful of students in the classroom, and most of my students at home, who now see my back, that see, you know, we're supposed to be aiming, according to that letter, we're supposed to be aiming our computers at a board and at the teacher. So if we do that, if we follow those instructions, a student, the students all at home, which is again, most of our students, are now seeing my back, seeing a board from a distance, which is not easy when you take the light glare and so forth into account and handwriting. And they're seeing, they're experiencing now, they teach, their teacher and their whole classroom sort of from the third person. So the connection with the majority of our students is no, is diminished, not improved. And I guess, I, I don't understand why, you know, I, I guess I don't understand the goal. Is it just, I, I don't understand what we're trying to gain. If, if we're taking the best interests of our students into account, that's not it. Not to mention the Wi-Fi issues, and I hope that they are better. I know you said we upgraded the technology, but we lost a lot of teaching time due to the technology issues. When we're teaching hybrid, the technology issues with having two teachers in a room together make me lose a major connection with my students, because you, you, the, the feedback issues. I, I have to be muted. I can no longer hear my students on here, because if I have my sound on, the feedback, you know, rings in everyone's ears. So the, the difficulty of pulling it off successfully is exponentially greater. And I don't feel that it benefits the students. I want to be back in the classroom when everyone can be back in the classroom. But until that time, I don't think that it really truly, that the hybrid model is in the best interests of the students. I feel that being in front of them and working with them is important. Most of my, my special needs students were home, and now I couldn't even provide, I'm, I'm focused on the few who are in the classroom, because I can't even focus on them in, in the, the virtual meetings. I, I can't even hear them except from a distance. I can't, I can't even, I'm, I'm supposed to help the ones in the classroom now, because how can one teacher keep the, one teacher can't do both. I'm lucky I have two teachers in the room, but one teacher can't do both successfully. And I feel like we are actually hurting our students, not helping them by doing the hybrid. So that's my opinion. Until we can all be vaccinated and everyone back into the building, I, I think that we are doing more harm than good. I'm sorry to say that. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, you know, definitely for, for sharing that feedback, and I certainly, you know, we understand where, where you're coming from. None of this is ideal. We're in a pandemic, and, and none of our lives right now are ideal, unfortunately. What I can say is that, you know, the board takes responsibility for implementing what they have to, as per what's dictated by the governor's executive orders and the Department of Education. And the governor's executive orders and the Department of Education are telling us that if schools can open to whatever capacity we can, we should be in school. And so therefore, this board, and myself as superintendent, we will do all we can to, to, to meet that requirement and, and to do what we need to do to, to remain open to whatever capacity we, we possibly can.
Thank you. We have another speaker. That would be Lauren Almeida.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak towards the asynchronous scheduling. I know Ms. Nielsen brought it up, and Ms. Zercher did explain it, but I just thought that giving the perspective of the student in terms of that scheduling would be kind of helpful. So for me and for a lot of my fellow students, especially at the high school, I think that the asynchronous scheduling was a very valuable implementation. I think because, you know, started this year, we're, we're kind of just like sitting in front of a computer screen for six hours, and, you know, as, as hard as the teachers try to, you know, engage us and make us interested, and they do, they really, really, really tried their hardest. I think sometimes we're just kind of experiencing this dead time, kind of like this wasted time. And the asynchronous scheduling kind of gave us the ability to kind of work at our own pace, which I think is really important too. I don't think everyone works, you know, like at the same pace as everyone else. So the asynchronous scheduling really did give us the opportunity to do work when, you know, we were mentally ready to do it. And I think that, you know, mental health was a really big part of that. It really benefited. I know that asynchronous schedule really gave me a break from, you know, staring at a computer screen for that amount of time. And I do, I know that they were implemented in the intention for teachers and to help with scheduling. But I think that what also should be noted is the fact that while it was intended to help teachers, it also helps so many more people than what it was meant. And I think that's a really positive thing. And I think it's something that we should really take into account. So I just wanted to say that, that I really did like the asynchronous scheduling, and I understand all the reasons that it was taken away. But if there was any sort of modification to it, or any sort of thing that we could, you know, kind of retain that sort of scheduling, I think would be such a huge help to the students who are working really hard, and especially to the teachers who I think really deserve that sort of time to work one-on-one with their students, work hard, and just sort of like that. So that's just my thinking. Thank you.
I do, you know, I want to say, Lauren, you are such an impressive young lady. Lauren reaches out to me whenever she has a voice for students, whenever she has something to share and say. She advocates, she does exactly what she's supposed to do as, as a student board rep. She did reach out to me on this topic. We talked, we emailed back and forth a little bit on it. And I explained to Lauren, and I've explained to a number of people, that the feedback on those asynchronous days was, was mixed. We got a lot of feedback like Lauren's, saying, "This really helped me." And then we got feedback from other parents saying, "Where's my child's teacher? My child needs their teacher." So it just, you know, it, it varies, and I think like Lauren said, everybody does work at their own pace and has their own needs. And so, so she's right. It was, it was. And so she's right. It was extremely beneficial as a sort of like a side effect because like she mentioned, it wasn't why we initially put them in place, but it was a positive side effect for many of our students. But we did receive feedback all the way up to the county superintendent, who also received feedback that it didn't necessarily work for everybody. And so with that in mind, you know, we're continuing to monitor it. But it's a difficult one because it works for some, but not necessarily all. And we're pretty split on the parent feedback we've received on that.
Thank you. Next to speak, we have Claudia Curcio.
Claudia, if you're here, you can unmute your mic.
I'm sorry, it wasn't going off. I kept clicking it and it wasn't going off. Claudia Curcio, first grade teacher, put the video on too if you want. First grade teacher in a primary school. I'm also a resident of South River, 70 Mercer Street. I would just like to add a little bit about the scheduling, the half-day scheduling. Working in the primary school, not only do the kids get confused sometimes, but the parents do too. When we were on the four days of one schedule and then Wednesday was the schedule we're on now, the parents never knew kind of when we were going to have schedule, special, when we were having lunch, when we were doing anything. It really isn't a half day that we're on because we have lunch at 1:00, well, 12:55. We come back and then we have the office hours. Now, it says we don't have to come back until after 2:00. Most of us come back a lot earlier and start our one-on-ones and our small group meetings because especially in the primary school, that's where we get to evaluate a lot of their reading. We get to help them one-on-one with whatever problems they're having. By doing the longer day schedule, not only is it too long for the little ones on the computer that way, but it's also a different schedule that they have to follow. Now lunch is pushed earlier instead of later, but on Wednesdays, it's later. It's, they need continuity. They need the same, they need repetition. I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the word. They need the same thing day to day. It helps them to learn. It helps them to function. You see them act better. You see them respond better to you. So if we have to go hybrid, which I gather we really will, I would like that you to possibly reconsider staying on the schedule we're on now and letting them go home to eat lunch at the 12:55, which they're eating lunch now at 12:55 anyway. Don't know if it's possible, but I think it would be better for the students. We'd be able to have more one-on-one time with them that way. And it'd be easier for them to adjust to a hybrid schedule of two days in, a day off entirely, another two days in. If at least they had the same schedule, it might work a little better. I thank you for the time and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. I'm sure our superintendent will be taking that into consideration. And I do not see any additional speakers at this time. We could wait a moment or two longer. But I believe we may be done with our public portion. At this time, I do believe that it is a safe statement to make that the board does stand behind and support Superintendent Zercher's recommendation for the return to the hybrid model on February 1st. Seeing that there are no other speakers, we will close this public portion of the board meeting. And having no other business to come before the board, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Burn, adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Byrne. Is there a second?
Nielsen.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.